This livestream brought to you by the Excelsior Citizen and these generous sponsors.
The Simmons Sales Team, your hometown Realtors.
Our Excelsior Springs Hospital, where better care is right in your backyard.
For the we're talking about our dedication to preventing and restoring power outages, our pursuit of safety, or providing the best member experience possible, we are relentless in serving our communities.
Since 1974, Chuck Anderson Ford has proudly served the community's automotive needs. From new and pre-owned vehicles to parts and service, they've been there in the past and they'll be there in the future. Visit Chuck Anderson Ford today. Find out how you can advertise with Excelsior Springs' number one community resource. Visit excelsiocitizen.com today.
Good evening. It is 6:00 PM on the 18th of August 2025, and I call our city council meeting to order. We'll begin with an opening prayer by Pastor Mike Wooddrove, Crescent Lake Christian Center, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome, brother.
Thank you. So, Lord, we just want to take a moment, Lord, to acknowledge you, Lord, to ask you to bless our community, Lord God, to protect us, cover us, Lord Jesus, with your favor. Lord, I ask you specifically to bless the men and women in this room that do business in our town, Lord God. Give them grace and strength, Lord, imaginative ideas that come from you, Lord Jesus. And God, we just want to say thank you for this town. Lord, continue to bless us. Lord, would you cause a new level of prosperity and graciousness to come into this community? Lord, we ask you please, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brother Mike.
Thank you.
Now, if we could have the city court deliver the roll call of council members, please.
Councilman McGovern?
Here.
Councilman Rennie? Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
At this time, I'll invite any visitors who would like to speak to the council. Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to approving the minutes from the special city council meeting of July 22nd, 2025. I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the minutes of the special city council meeting of July 22nd, 2025.
Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes of the special city council meeting of July 22nd, 2025, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose like sign. Those minutes are approved. And now I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the budget work session of August 1, 2025.
Move to approve the minutes of budget work session of August 1, 2025. Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes of the budget work session of August 1, 2025, signify by saying aye.
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 I'll oppose like sign. Those minutes are approved. And now the minutes of the regular city council meeting of August 4, 2025. I'll entertain a motion.
I will move to approve the meeting minutes of the regular city council meeting of August 4, 2025. Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes from the regular city council meeting of August 4, 2025, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose like sign. Those minutes are approved. And now I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as it has been printed and presented before you.
Move to approve consideration of the agenda as it's presented and printed. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call, Shannon?
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes.
Agenda item number one this evening is consideration of declaration of board vacancies after September 30th, 2025. Resolution number 1596. Molly, would you make us aware of the need for this resolution?
Yes, thank you. Most of your board appointments have terms that expire at the end of September, and there are approximately 25 seats that come open, most of those of which the person holding the seat is eligible for reappointment. But I think there's a couple that are not. So, anyway, it's to publish that we have board vacancies and encourage those who are interested to apply. We keep the applications on file for a year because throughout the year, there could be vacancies that also occur.
Great. And for those watching online, I'll just remind our public that there is an opportunity to volunteer on these boards and commissions. And the way you do that is go on the City of Excelsior website, click on volunteers, fill out an application, but the best way to get started with that is by signing up to attend the Citizens Leadership Academy and find out how the city works, all the nuts and bolts. It's a great experience. Any questions for Molly on this resolution? Hearing none, we have before us a resolution by the city council of the City of Excelsior Springs, Missouri, County of Clay, to officially declare vacancies which now exist or will exist through the month of September 2025 on various boards and commissions for the City of Excelsior Springs. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution number 1596.
Move to approve Resolution 1596, consideration of declaration of board vacancies after September 30th, 2025. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call, Shannon?
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern? Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. Resolution number 1596 is approved. Number two is consideration of mowing equipment purchase, Resolution number 1597. And who is bringing this before us?
I am going to share this with you.
On behalf of Brian?
Yes. The golf course is requesting the purchase of five pieces of mowing equipment, two greens mowers, two fairway mowers, and one small rough mower. And we knew a couple of years ago, we were planning out their capital purchases, that they would need help about this time for the purchase of these mowers. And they presented this to Capital Improvements last week with approval to move forward. So Capital Improvements would contribute $340,000, and the golf course would contribute about $95,000.
Any comments or questions regarding this resolution? I'll make one comment regarding this resolution. I encouraged Brian during the Capital Improvement meeting, the one mower that they're replacing for the greens, he said it's still got some life in it, but it's very high mileage. And I encouraged him rather than sell it to keep that as a backup. So I think that's a good plan. We experienced something like that with the back truck when we approved that. I will enter, we have before us a resolution authorizing the execution of lease purchase agreements for golf course equipment. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution number 1597.
I move to approve Resolution number 1597, consideration of mowing equipment purchase.
Second.
Roll call, Shannon?
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. Resolution number 1597 has been approved. Number three on the agenda tonight is consideration of purchasing next-gen electrode stack and diode rectifier for the community center pool system, Resolution number 1598. We have Jesse Hall here to explain the details of this resolution. Welcome, Jesse.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. In front of you, I think you remember this, you entered into an agreement with Navitas as we entered into phase two to look at our energy audits. This was one of the areas that we felt would benefit greatly, and it has. It came to us, it would be more cost-effective, it would simplify the process, reduce the water use, but more importantly, on the safety standards, elimination of hazardous chemical stories by our staff, reduce the risk of accidental exposure to leaks, and naturally enhance the safety measures. This is a next-gen chlorine generator, and every three years, between two and four years, actually, and we're at year three, but we'll need to replace what's called the stack. And the stack is what actually generates the chlorine. And so in front of you tonight is two pieces, the electrode stack and the diode rectifier. And these two pieces will allow us to continue to generate the chlorine and continue to save money, as you have a draft there in front of you that explains it. Be happy to entertain any questions.
Hearing no questions, we have before us a resolution authorizing the purchase of a next-gen electrode stack and diode rectifier for the community center pool system. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution number 1598.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve Resolution 1598, consideration of purchase of next-gen electrode stack and diode rectifier for the community center pool system.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call, Shannon?
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. Resolution number 1598 is approved. Thank you, Jesse, for coming.
Thank you, and thanks for the meal you had.
All right, number four on the agenda this evening is consideration of repair to 10 highway fence by Coppell Fabrication, Resolution number 1599. We have Chad Berzong, our Public Works Director, delivering the details of this resolution.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Due to the last car wreck in the VFW, the fence was damaged. We have an estimate from the manufacturer for the repair and labor to install. The total is $24,057.60. We are working with the driver's insurance for a reimbursable amount of some amount, but we are unsure what that total will be due to their insurance limits. Transportation Trust Authority met on August 11th, 2025, and approved the allocation of this amount for the work. A resolution is attached with an estimate from Coppell Fabrication, as they were the ones who originally designed it, built it, and installed it. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Did they say when they would? I don't remember.
He said their schedule was opening up, so, because I asked him that, but so, I didn't give an exact date.
I did make a request to Chad during Capital Improvements before we approved this, that we retain those panels, the ones that are not broken completely, they're tweaked.
Right.
And once you unbolt those, they may straighten out a little bit, or we may be able to straighten them out and use them for other purposes, like Livia Landing or someplace like that.
Okay. We can do that.
A lot of times a contractor will come in and they'll abscond with that, go, hey, we can use these on another job site. So, all right, we have before us a resolution authorizing repair of the 10 highway fence by Coppell Fabrication, Resolution number 1599. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve Resolution 1599, or consideration of repair to 10 highway fence. Is it Coppell or Coppell Fabrication?
I think Coppell.
Right.
My bad.
Yeah, I don't know.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call, Shannon?
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. Resolution number 1599 is approved. Thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
Number five on the agenda this evening, we have consideration of adopting the written decision of the city council denying the request for reasonable accommodation submitted by Oxford House, Resolution number 1600. And Molly McGovern will bring us the details of this resolution.
Okay. We have a process for the city council to consider requests for reasonable accommodations. We received an application from Oxford House. The city council held a public hearing on July 22nd to hear the applicant's testimony, testifying as to the need for the application, as well as members of the public spoke as well. The city council reconvened on August 12th to consider and vote on the request. And at that time, the city council voted to deny the request. And today, we are preparing a written decision that is attached to this. We're accepting a written decision that was prepared and made a part of this resolution that spells out the city council's findings and conclusions that were reached in making its decision.
Any questions for Molly or comments regarding this resolution? Hearing none, we have before us a resolution adopting the written decision of the city council denying the request for reasonable accommodations submitted by Oxford House. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution number 1600.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve Resolution 1600, consideration of adopting the written decision of the city council denying the request for reasonable accommodation submitted by Oxford House.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call, Shannon?
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. Resolution number 1600 is approved. Moving on to agenda item number six, consideration of electric franchise renewal, ordinance number 25-08-03. Mike Edwards from Ameren is here to present the details of this resolution.
Thank you, Mayor Spahn.
Ordinance, excuse me.
Ordinance, thank you, members of the council. Just, it's a, the document in front of you has a non-exclusive continuation of our 20-year franchise agreement with the City of Excelsior Springs. It's gone through legal counsel, yours and ours, and it was adopted by both. There were some changes that were made. This gives us the ability to use the right-of-ways and trim trees and collect the gross receipts tax on behalf of the City of Excelsior Springs and pass that along. So it's a continuation of what we've had in the past, but that's what's in front of you.
Any questions for Mike? I have one.
Yes, sir.
Who wrote this thing?
We have.
This lengthy discussion.
He has to read the first paragraph.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh, yeah, it is lengthy. Our legal team is.
Okay. Well, they get paid by word.
Yeah, they do.
All right, we have before us an ordinance renewing an existing franchise and granting for a period of 20 years to Union Electric Company, doing business as Ameren, Missouri, a corporation its successors and assigns a non-exclusive franchise right, permission, and authority to construct, reconstruct, excavate, for, place, maintain, operate, and use all equipment, facilities, devices, materials, apparatus, or media, including but not limited to ducts, lines, pipes, hoses, cables, culverts, tubes, poles, towers, wires, conduits, conductors, manholes, transformers, underground vaults, switchgear, capacitors, receivers, and transmitters with all necessary or appropriate appurtenances and appliances in connection therewith, in, along, across, over, and under the streets, roads, alleys, sidewalks, squares, bridges, and other public places in the City of Excelsior Springs, and areas dedicated to the city for public utility use, for the purpose of transmitting, furnishing, and distributing electricity within and through said city, prescribing the terms and conditions of such grant, imposing certain obligations upon the grantee and successors and assigns successively in connection therewith. I will entertain a motion.
It's a good thing it's an ordinance that requires two reads.
I will entertain a motion to take ordinance number 25-08-03 to second reading.
I move we take ordinance number 25-08-03, consideration of electric franchise renewal to second reading.
Second.
Roll call, Shannon?
Councilman McGovern?
I should know, just to say.
Well, I gotta read it again anyway.
No, if we don't take it to second.
Well, that's true. Yes.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes, because I'd like to see him suffer.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. As I was reading through this before the council meeting, I almost felt like I was preaching a sermon. We have before us an ordinance renewing an existing franchise and granting for a period of 20 years to Union Electric Company, doing business as Ameren, Missouri, a corporation its successors and assigns a non-exclusive franchise right, permission, and authority to construct, reconstruct, excavate, for, place, maintain, operate, and use all equipment, facilities, devices, materials, apparatus, or media, including but not limited to ducts, lines, pipes, hoses, cables, culverts, tubes, poles, towers, wires, conduits, conductors, manholes, transformers, underground vaults, switchgear, capacitors, receivers, and transmitters with all necessary or appropriate appurtenances and appliances in connection therewith, in, along, over, across, and under the streets, roads, alleys, sidewalks, squares, bridges, and other public places in the City of Excelsior Springs, and areas dedicated to the city for public utility use, for the purpose of transmitting, furnishing, and distributing electricity within and through said city, prescribing the terms and conditions of such grant, imposing certain obligations upon the grantee and successors and assigns successively in connection therewith. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 25-08-03.
Move to approve ordinance 25-08-03, consideration of electric franchise renewal.
Second.
Roll call, Shannon?
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. Ordinance number 25-08-03 is approved. I believe you have one more, Mike.
You gotta read it.
I do. It is almost as lengthy.
We're thorough.
Okay. Agenda item number seven is.
The guy went to school with Chad Berzong.
Oh, that's good. That's a good one.
Consideration of streetlight contract ordinance number 25-08-04. And again, it's Mike Edwards delivering the details.
Once again, 20-year contract, this extension of what's already in place. Went through legal review and just allowing us to provide lighting. A lot of it's where you want it, obviously, because it's, you're paying us to have the lighting there, but you have your own lighting as well. There's two different exhibits. There's a customer-owned and then a utility-owned, because you guys have a lot of the downtown decorative lighting that you guys own. So it's all spelled out in that agreement, depending on how it's set out. But just a continuation, 20-year continuation of what we have in place now. I'll entertain any questions you might have.
Hearing no question, we have an ordinance providing for the lighting by electricity of the streets, avenues, alleys, and other public places in the City of Excelsior Springs in the state of Missouri, and other electric service requirements of the city by contract, setting forth the terms of the proposed contract between the city and Union Electric Company, doing business as Ameren, Missouri, its successors and assigns, and permitting said company to erect, operate, and maintain poles, lines, wires, cables, transformers, and other appliances in the streets and all other public places necessary for and appurtenent to the performance of said contract as described herein. I'll entertain a motion to take ordinance number 25-08-04 to second reading.
I make a motion to take ordinance 25-08-04, consideration of streetlight contract to second reading.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call, Shannon?
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. And for the second reading, we have an ordinance providing for the lighting by electricity of the streets, avenues, alleys, and other public places in the City of Excelsior Springs in the state of Missouri, and other electric service requirements of the city by contract, setting forth the terms of the proposed contract between the city and Union Electric Company, doing business as Ameren, Missouri, its successors and assigns, and permitting said company to erect, operate, and maintain poles, lines, wires, cables, transformers, and other appliances in the streets and all other public places necessary for and appurtenent to the performance of said contract as described herein. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 25-08-04.
I move we approve ordinance number 25-08-04, consideration of streetlight contract.
Second.
Roll call, Shannon?
Councilman Spear?
Yes.
Councilman McGovern?
Yes.
Mayor Protim St. John?
Yes.
Mayor Spahn?
Yes. Ordinance number 25-08-04 is approved. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I only made you read it twice, but we need three of us to read it.
Okay. All right.
All right. Number eight on the agenda is July revenue report and financials for review. Our Finance Director, Vonda Floyd, will present the details of these financials for July before the council. Thank you for coming and welcome, Vonda.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you, Mayor and council. Within your council packets, the finance department has prepared for your information and review the details of appropriations and revenues for the month of July 2025. I wanted to note, before I read those details, that the general liability for the city, general liability, work comp, all of those annual premiums come renewed July 1st. And on this particular expenditure for July, you will find the work comp premium, which was a little over $466,000. So the rest of those will come be paid in August, and you'll see those on the next presentation of financials. The appropriations are in accordance with the city's purchasing policy and are as follows. Five weeks of appropriations also. July 3rd, $112,102.75. July 10th, $342,762.60. July 17th, $623,066.28. July 24th, $861,066.68. And appropriations on July 31st, $272,579.18. Two payrolls in the month of July, July 15th, $484,716.21. And July 31st, $472,902.25. For total appropriations, $3,169,195.95. And the revenues for the month of July, $3,278,178.57.
Any questions for Vonda? Any comments?
No. Thank you.
Thank you, Vonda. It's for review only and does not require council action. With that, we will move into remarks, and we'll begin with our city manager, Molly.
I have nothing.
Okay.
Thank you.
We will begin down here with Councilman McGovern.
No comment.
No comment. Councilman Spear?
Fantastic barbecue contest weekend. And then before that, we went to the soft opening, I guess, for the VFW Bingo Friday night. And while that was completely enjoyable, the unexpected surprise was I ran into a lady, Wanda Tally, who I used to watch attentively and got most of my piano inspiration from. So it was one of those serendipitous moments.
She's a bingo aficionado.
She, yes, she is. But it was certainly a pleasant surprise. But the whole weekend was just phenomenal. I know Lindsey Baxter and her team just work extra hard to pull all of that together, and it is reflected in the quality of everything that goes on. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mayor Protim?
Selfridged, more head has been here 39 years with Park and Rec, which is a very cool accomplishment. And one of the things that came up, and it didn't click until Friday night when I was sitting there eating supper at the golf course, that when we were talking about the golf budget, the golf course budget, it was mentioned about the age of golfers is lowering because there are a lot more younger golfers coming into play. And I think that's neat. I'm a non-golfer, but I appreciate people that have that skill, and the fact that we're starting to see younger kids get involved. Anything against them outdoors is worthwhile, as far as I'm concerned. We've got too many of them locking themselves in roadside and stuck to a screen, so that, I thought that was significant in itself. And then with a side of it, too, with Janet being with Park and Rec. Park and Rec offers a lot of programs that give young folks and older folks, all the way up to my age, something to do.
And beyond.
Yeah, that's true.
If that's possible.
The average age, the average age of the golfer has come down considerably since I quit playing.
You were skewing the numbers.
I was skewing the numbers. I had to spend more time at the museum. That's how that goes.
So you're saying the age of the museum went up?
Yeah.
Okay.
I will say, mayor, if I can.
Yes, jump right back in there.
Yeah, jump right back in. I forgot. Last week, we had a very nice employee appreciation lunch, and a lot of work went into that with Shannon leading the charge, and she did a great job, and all of her team, and Kimberly and everybody. It was a great event, great meal, everything was great.
It was.
Let's do it again next year.
Anytime you're serving naughties, you can't go wrong with that. It was wonderful.
It was.
And I really appreciated the privilege of serving our employees. Molly was throwing breadsticks at people.
Like Lambert's cattle.
That's right. Now, that could have been more interesting.
Yeah.
Because I'm not that good at throwing.
They look like bums. All right. The only thing I'll add to the barbecue festival, it was another success, great time. I was down here for quite a while on Friday evening, and I had the privilege of welcoming all the competition teams as they came in at 5:00 here in the Hall of Waters, and I found a thing that I did not know existed, barbecue competition jokes. And so I told them a few of my jokes, and most of them, I mean.
Big telling not to quit your day job.
What does this, what does, what kind of grill does this fighter barbecue on?
You told me these.
Yeah.
Whoever.
Whoever, yeah. But in all seriousness, I did run into one of the competitors that went early on for a massage, and they just had a horrible massage, but it was his fault, he asked for a dry rub.
There you go.
That was one of them.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, they were all bad.
Yeah, you're right.
You can use them again next year.
There you go.
Yes. All right. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Second, all in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
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 And since I forgot to gavel in, I'll gavel out twice. Meeting adjourned.